Recording in progress.
Well, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the City of Fortuna City Council. If you'll silence your devices, we'll call this meeting to order. And would you lead us in the pledge?
I'd like to lead this.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Thank you. At this time, our first item of business is oral comments from the public. If anybody has anything to comment on that is not on the agenda, this is the time to do that. Seeing none. We'll move on to our presentation on our mid-year budget and our finance director, Aaron Filmling.
All right. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So it is my pleasure to present before you the mid-year budget for your consideration. So the intent of this report and discussion is to review activities for the first half of this fiscal year, in this case, July through December of 2024, and provide a revised projection of or corrective action if required. So the formal summittal of a review during the fiscal year provides an opportunity to identify and present any fiscal problem areas and to recommend corrective action or additional funding if required. Staff will be reviewing with the City Council the city's general fund tonight. Included in the council packet is information on the water, wastewater, and other funds of the city. Generally, those funds are in good shape, and staff will not be presenting on them. However, if the council has any questions, we'll be happy to answer those. And then I also just wanted to note that as part of this discussion, staff is not recommending making any budget adjustments to the current adopted budget. Any proposed supplemental budget requests will be brought forward by staff as a separate item for council consideration. So before we dive into the mid-year numbers, I'd like to review how fiscal year 2324 ended. So the general fund currently will end fiscal year 2324 with a net surplus of $11,391, which is good. The surplus was primarily due to increases in investment revenue compared to fiscal year 2223. Investment revenue increased by approximately $350,000. While this increase in investment revenue is great news, staff is remaining cautious in estimating future investment revenue. And I'll be showing a slide on why that is coming up. The decrease in nonrecurring receipts is due to no longer receiving COVID-era American Rescue Plan Act monies. And so that we were, the city was receiving over about a million dollars a year in fiscal year 2122 and 2223. So those went away in 2324. And then on the expense side, the reason why the salaries and benefits decreased from 2223 to 2324 so significantly was because the city made a large one-time additional discretionary payment to CalPERS in fiscal year 2223 and did not make any such payment in 2324. And so again, overall, the city did have a surplus of $11,391, so that is positive. So as mentioned, we had a $350,000 increase in our investment revenue. A large reason why was because of the LEAF investment. And as you can see in this chart, we are at all-time highs. And so currently, we're at about four and a half percent. The 15-year average is a little over 1%, so we're way ahead of where the trend line would be. And you can see in 1819 and 2020, there's kind of a three-year period where it goes up and back down. And so that's kind of what we envision here in 2324 and 25, and it kind of starting to come down as we get into the later parts of this year and into fiscal year 2526. So now we'll take a look at our fiscal year 2425 year-to-date revenues. So the graph shows a lot of numbers, but I'm just focusing kind of on the on the far right column, the mid-year adjustment numbers. Property tax and property tax in lieu, those come in typically two to three installments, one in January and one at the end of the fiscal year typically. You can see we are estimating some modest increases in both of those. And so we had a meeting with HDL, our sales tax consultant, and so they they kind of estimated, increased their estimates for this year and for next fiscal year. And we're estimating about a 4% increase going into 2526. On the other hand, you'll see that sales tax, we reversed those projections to be less than what we had budgeted. So again, meeting with HDL, our sales tax consultant, they revised their projections to be lower than what we had in previous, previously adopted with the adopted budget. We're also seeing some slight declines in our TOT, our transient occupancy tax. And so we'll keep monitoring that. Our franchise fee revenues, you can see the increase there. That is one benefit of PG&E raising their rates is that we do get a small portion of that back through our franchise fees. And then jumping down to other, the reason that is such a large increase is again due to the investment revenue, particularly the higher earned interest rate from LEAF. So Amy presented this at the state of the city, but for those of you that weren't in attendance, here's our sales tax kind of historical trend over the last few years. And then looking ahead at where we estimate this current fiscal year that we're in and next fiscal year. And you can see the trend line is going down, which is not the way we want to see it. The COVID-era highs in fiscal year 2021 and 2122, we just have not seen consumer spending pick back up to those levels so far. And so it does seem that consumer sentiment is kind of tampered. Folks don't have as much discretionary spending due to inflation, and so they're just not purchasing as many of those kind of discretionary items that we saw, you know, during COVID when when people were getting a little more cash in their pockets. So on the expense side, we see that most of our departments are estimated to finish, you know, pretty close to within their, what their adopted budgets were. Staff is estimating having an increase in department operating expenditures overall. At the bottom, you'll see $135,000. These increases can be primarily attributed to two supplemental budget requests that the city council has already adopted. The first was for the city hall remodel project, which added $95,000 to the budget. And the second was for on-call planning services, which added $65,000 to the budget. And so if you take both of those out, the general fund would be within the adopted budget, so that is good. And then putting these together, so the revenues, what we already kind of went through and the expenditures together, you can see at the bottom, net sources uses, we have an improvement. So we are now estimating a $30,515 surplus as opposed to the adopted budget, which had a $90,533 deficit. And as if the council remember, the reason that we had that deficit was there are two rollovers, one for the building vehicles and one for the Monday Club chimney. And so we were able to accomplish those and still have a surplus or an estimated surplus for this fiscal year. And so staff will continue to monitor the city's fiscal health and use these findings to assist in preparing the fiscal year 2526 budget. And I just wanted to kind of conclude, review with the city council, the next steps in the budget process. So on March 18th, our city departments will present to the Measuring Committee their recommendations. And then the Measuring Committee will come back on April 1st to finalize those committees, the committee's recommendations. And then we'll meet with the city council in late April for our first special budget workshop, where the Measuring List will be presented, as well as all of the city's proposed budgets for the general funds. And then we'll have a second budget workshop with the city council in early May to answer any outstanding questions and to go over the enterprise funds, which is water and wastewater primarily. And then we hope to adopt the budget on June 2nd of 2025. And so that concludes my mid-year budget presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any council questions? Seeing none? Oh, wait a minute.
I was just going to say, I already met with city manager and Aaron, who answered all my little minor questions.
That's where I was at also, was with that. Is there any public comment on the presentation? Seeing none. Well, we receive it and we're, it's pretty good, really, if we can come in at budget. And I think you do a great job of collating the numbers and presenting them in a way we understand and the public can understand. So thank you for that. And we'll keep that close to our watch it. So with that, we move on to the consent calendar. We have city council minutes from the third, a special meeting and the third regular meeting. We have administrative monthly reports, all the monthly reports, community development, finance, parks and rec, police, public works, River Lodge, reported disbursements, approved an SBR and police department SBR. A request to purchase Microsoft 365 licenses for the city staff because they're no longer supporting Office 2016 and 19. You wish, anybody wish to pull anything?
I would like to pull G.
Okay.
Yeah, let me get here. Just had this up and it disappeared. I just wanted to congratulate, in here it has, the following annual awards were received by the following employees. Chief is really good about positive reinforcement, so I just wanted to recognize these officers. Officers, Officer John Geer, sworn officer of the year. Dispatcher Tanya Cadel, professional staff member of the year. Sergeant Gabe Charlton, chief's award. Officer Logan Mitchell, top cop. Detective Brian Taylor, membership award, or mentorship award. And Angela Conley, community service award. So congratulation to all those employees. And then I would like to ask Lieutenant to say a few words on the wellness program.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Trent. The item in the staff report regarding Wellness and Resiliency Program, the department back in 2023 received state funds in the form of a grant, and it is to expend money on officer wellness and resiliency. So we did a lot of research on how to spend these funds, looked at other departments. Some of the departments utilized gym equipment, some of the departments utilized counseling services. There's a company, Restoration First Responders Network, that is, they're specialists that deal with first responders, clinicians that deal with first responders and their families. And this company works with the sheriff's office, Eureka Police Department, and other local allied agencies. In addition to that, they work with our peer counselors currently. And our peer counselors that have been away at training, receive peer counseling training, they allow our peer counselors to attend the monthly meetings and participate with the allied agencies so that we have a bigger network in case of an emergency or something happens and our officers or employees need support. So we're happy to say that after all this time, we were able to finally execute a contract for one-year services with the company. And the caveat with that is we were able to do that solely because we had the support of our employees, the support of our employee association. They took their own funds, we were short, we had a shortfall. They took approximately $1,800. They saw the need for this, and they stepped up and said, hey, this is important. You know, the care and welfare of our employees is extremely important. And they went ahead and cut a check for us to be able to execute that contract for one year. We just want to thank them for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I knew it was coming up.
Go ahead. Oops, sorry.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Justin Primofori. I'm the president of the Fortuna Police Employees Association. I know most of you here. Just so the public understands, the Fortuna Police Employees Association represents the dispatchers and line-level police officers and professional staff that work the front counters at the police department. So when you call 911, one of our members is answering the phone. When you come in to, you know, license something or whatever, it's one of our members, and it's one of our members who's responding to your emergency call in the middle of the night. This contract means a lot to me, finally seeing it through and seeing our membership step up to make sure that it happened. And it really came to fruition, well, I think most of you know that our group has gone through a lot this last year with loss and critical incident-type things. And particularly for me, about 10 years ago, I experienced something while I was on duty, and it was very difficult to go through where I was at in my personal life with children and such. And when it was brought to the attention of the administration, I got the, well, there's a phone number over there that you can call if you need to talk to somebody. There was no proactive approach to dealing with these situations, and we deal with a lot. And not saying that not other, every other law enforcement agency doesn't, or the fire department or EMS. But in Fortuna, we're pretty unique that we respond to pretty much every call for service that a lot of law enforcement agencies don't go to. And it was, yeah, there's a phone number that you can call if you need to talk to somebody. Whereas now, we had an incident about three or four months ago where we made sure that there was somebody right there to sit with that officer who went through it, made sure that he got home, worked with, and had a support system where he could decompress and, you know, take a break. And we don't have many of those right now due to our staffing levels. I mean, we got guys and gals working 30, 40 hours overtime a week on a regular basis. And that wears on people. And for us to continue operating, we need to make sure that our personnel are mentally fit and prepared to, you know, deal with the ongoing stresses of our jobs without really having a break to decompress. I recommend, if you guys are interested in it, there's the Emotional Survival Guide to Law Enforcement. It's a really short read. It'll tell you a lot about what we go through and how our, you know, our physical and psychological reactions are to things and the cycle that we go through, and it's a real thing. So I encourage you guys to take a look at that. But I'm happy that and honored that our chief went to see this through, and this is a priority for him. And us as an organization said, yes, it's time for us to step up and make sure that this happens. So, you know, this wouldn't happen without our members stepping forward and making sure it's done. I hope in the future, you know, that this is something that can be an ongoing thing and not just a one-year contract. So thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank the association for what they did. And congratulations on having the foresight to look ahead and see this and stepping up and doing that. And I would also say congratulations to all the award winners this year. And the department is in a good place, so thank you. So with that, do we have a, any other items, questions? You can get a motion, pass the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We move to city council business and certify item, certify the final supplemental environmental impact report and adopt the general plan land use element amendments for the Mill District specific plan and implement the qualified zone and design guidelines. Staff report?
Bear with me as I get to the, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Johnson and honorable council members. I'm Sherry Meads, the Community Development Director. And as you mentioned, Cory, tonight is a pretty complex and.
Is your mic on?
It is. It's a pretty complex project with lots of parts that we're hoping to bring all together tonight and move forward with getting this in play. So this is just a brief agenda. It's a very complex topic, but thankfully, we've been before you, most of you, with the item before. And the staff report and all of the attachments were included in your packet. So I'll provide a brief background overview, explain the environmental review process, pass it over to my good buddy here, John with Plan West Partners. He'll take over some of the EIR information and talk about the specific plan implementation. And then we'll just move on into the action and get this thing going. So as most of you know, the, when the Palco Mill site closed in 2004, the city had an opportunity to figure out, what do we want to do with this space? Not that we were the owners, but it was an opportunity zone. And the general plan was adopted in 2010. So it took a good look at that site and established a Mill District focus area and then a Mill District land use designation to recognize the need to allow, you know, a multitude of different types of uses in the space versus it was, you know, as the mill, it was basically just an industrial and manufacturing type of site. So they were forward-thinking at that time. The Mill District, currently, the the general plan prohibits development within the 1,000-year floodplain. And the general plan directed the area of an air, the preparation of an area plan, which was developed, but it was not adopted with the general plan update or in a subsequent action. So recognizing that this was an opportunity and that the current ownership was not doing a whole lot of planning or keeping the area nice, the city developed and initiated the Mill District specific plan project itself in 2021. And it also, another change that has happened is that in 2023, new ownership took over the approximately 62-acre former mill site. And they've been very actively marketing that site as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. And the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center is envisioned to transform that area into, you know, a regional and important hub for residential, industrial, manufacturing, tourism, pretty much anything you can think of. So in order to implement the Mill District specific plan, there have to be some changes to the general plan land use element. As I mentioned, there were, there were already some policies for what they then called the Mill District focus area. And what we're doing is increasing additional compatible uses, allow certain types of development in the 100-year floodplain, and protect the riparian quarters of the Strong's and Mill Creeks by applying the streamside setbacks that you can see here, which are greater than the general plan. So other land use element changes, we are amending the general plan land use map and modifying the Mill District land use designation. We are replacing the maximum allowable commercial and industrial square footages with a monitoring program. Those were relatively arbitrary maximums based on concern at the time of Eureka having empty storefronts. So we've recognized now that, you know, let's, let's see what the market bears. And, you know, we'll keep track of what is coming into the site and ensure that the development is compatible with other uses and is maintained well. So the specific plan is organized into six chapters. Chapter one establishes the purpose, history, and physical context for the project. Chapter two provides the guiding principles for development, and that was based on input from the community, stakeholders, city staff, and technical consultants. The city council and commissions have seen this project and weighed in, excuse me, and also considers the requirements of state law and other city policies. Chapter three describes the various land uses that I mentioned earlier and how they, where they can be located. And that will develop the specific plan area. Chapter four covers circulation, infrastructure, and other public service improvements that are necessary to accommodate the growth. And it also provides implementing policies and performance measures. Chapter five summarizes the general cost estimated, estimated cost burdens to different land uses and various options for how those public improvements can be financed. Chapter six describes the steps needed to implement the specific plan and the relationship of this document with other important city documents like the general plan, the zoning, and subdivision ordinances. So part of what you're expected to review and act on tonight is certifying the supplemental environmental impact report that was created for the Mill District specific plan and general plan amendments. And so this just really provides an overview and timeline of how that environmental review process worked. You'll be making a series of findings that the EIR process is complete, and you'll be making a statement of overriding conditions, excuse me, that the benefits to the public of this project outweigh any significant environmental impacts that it may create. And I'm going to pass it to John to explain that there aren't any new significant impacts that this project will create, and he'll provide more information on that.
So supplemental EIR was prepared because the Mill District specific plan is an implementation of clear and comprehensive general plan Mill District focus area. of clear and comprehensive general plan Mill District focus area policy. And a supplemental EIR is prepared when there's a change to a project, in this case, the general plan, that would not result in new impacts or worsen existing impacts. And Sheri described the changes to the general plan. And the EIR and the background documents were focused on analyzing these changes. This slide indicates that most impact topic areas were, there was no substantial change from the prior final impact, environmental impact report that was prepared for the general plan. And the focus was on the areas where there could be significant impacts. Air quality was analyzed as part of the final EIR, modifying the draft supplemental EIR based on comments received. And there were a series of mitigations that essentially constrain the level of development to that that was analyzed as part of the prior general plan until further air quality analysis is done. And so there's, there's a lot of headroom there. There's a lot of development that could occur. And that, an update to the general plan would, would do that environmental analysis. Land use and economic impacts, there were land use map changes, changes in land use designation and the, the commercial industrial maximums that was analyzed in detail. Transportation and circulation was analyzed because vehicle miles traveled is a new sequo topic that wasn't a sequo topic in two thousand and ten when the prior EIR was done. And the EIR found that the impacts are significant and unavoidable. But the, those impacts are really the general plan as a, as a whole. And the Mill District specific plan lessens the impacts of the city as a whole because you're getting this compact development with a mixture of uses and creating new employment here that, where people won't be traveling out of the area. Parks and Recreation was analyzed because the hundred-year floodplain was, was called open space in, in the general plan. And it was, it's being, rather than being called up open space and prohibited from development, development is allowed to proceed there within the hundred-year floodplain, consistent with city and state policies. And public health and safety flooding was also analyzed for that purpose. There were, there, there are additional changes to the general plan land use element that came from mitigations in the EIR. On this page, there's four mitigations which will turn into, one, a citywide growth and, growth and development policy, and then new Mill District focus area policies that are all encouraging a sort of a complete streets network and development and transportation planning that would minimize additional vehicle trips. Then there are some additional changes to the Mill District, the draft Mill District specific plan that came out of mitigations. Some of them relate to air quality. There's a series of the air quality policies that, that relate to keeping development at what was previously analyzed until further air quality analysis is done. And applying some new statewide standards to distribution-related warehouse uses and increasing the setback from an area where an inadvertent discovery of tribal cultural resources is found. And so primarily, the, the changes relate to air quality. There were some, also some additional changes to the specific plan that flowed from comments from the Great Redwood Trail Agency. They wanted to ensure that the trail was properly characterized and that the coordination between the city and the GRTA was, was adequately characterized. And this last slide just describes how the specific plan is to be implemented. There's a, there's a series of topics within the specific plan. And each of them have one or more performance measures that all development proposals will be analyzed against to ensure that they're consistent with the specific plan. The Q-zone ordinance that's, that is before you tonight is, is one of the other ways that it's implemented. And within the specific plan, there's an infrastructure financing chapter that identifies the, the public improvements that are needed to serve the project, provides a very general estimate of project costs, and allocates the proportionate share to new development within the, the specific plan area.
Okay. So that's it in a nutshell. That's the too-long-didn't-read version. And so on the slide are the recommended city actions. And I know that you guys will make a motion, and it'll be by title only for most of these things. And the city clerk will fully enunciate them. But I do want to highlight that tonight, what we are doing is just doing, we're adopting everything except for zoning requires a second reading. So we will be bringing that to you on March third, two thousand and twenty-five. Whoa. And so with that, I'm here with Amy Nielsen, City Manager. Brendan Byrd is out in the audience for us. John and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Before we open public comment, is there any questions from council? Okay. Well, we'll open public comment. If there are anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this matter? Well, okay. Hey, I congratulate you. Well, if we don't have that, can we get a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three and read by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, certifying, certifying the final supplemental environmental impact report prepared for Fortuna general plan land use element amendments, the Mill District specific plan, and implementing Q-qualified zone and design guidelines, making the findings of fact, and adopting a statement of overriding considerations, and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And thank you. Can we get in it?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Another roll call?
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, adopting Fortuna general plan land use element amendments, the Mill District specific plan, and implementing design guidelines. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. So now we come to the ordinance. Can we get a?
It's your turn, Jerry.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five, or two thousand and twenty-five dash seven seven three, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fortuna amending section seventeen point zero two point zero three zero of the municipal code zoning map to adopt the Mill District Q-qualifying zone to implement the Mill District specific plan.
And can you conclude, continue the public hearing to March third?
And to continue the public hearing to March third.
Second.
Motion and second. Another roll call.
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And thank you. And thank you for the presentation and the explanation of everything, and appreciate it. And with that, our next item of business is to approve the interim Parks and Recreation Director. Staff report?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson and council members. On January, on Friday, January thirty-first, I was given notice by Heather Stevens, the current Parks and Recreation Director, that she was going to be placed on medical leave for a period of time. And then on Monday, the following Monday, I also received notification that the supervising recreation employee was also going to be resigning. And so this created an interesting predicament in the Parks and Recreation Department with no leadership. And so before you today is a recommendation to appoint Kalen Stainbrook as the interim Parks and Recreation Director until such time that the current Parks and Recreation Director returns from medical leave. And part of the reason this is important is because the Parks and Recreation Director is responsible for a number of items. That includes grant development, attending the technical advisory committee and safety meetings, administration of playgroups and roller skating, community service work coordination with the Humboldt County Probation Department, planning and facilitating recreation activities such as adult and youth sports, school break, youth camps, summer fun camp, facility and field reservations. In addition, there's a number of management activities for facilities such as Monday Club and the River Lodge. And then also, most important, not necessarily most important, but very important, is the management of the Fortuna Transit System. And so I'd like to see those activities continue on. And Ms. Stainbrook has been filling in, in that role in the last couple of weeks, and I very much appreciate that. And so I recommend that Ms. Stainbrook receive an interim appointment as the Parks and Recreation Director until such time that the current Parks and Recreation Director returned from medical leave. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions?
I have just one. Do you know when that will be? Because this is for the fiscal year, I assume, ending June thirtieth. So will this proceed into the next fiscal year as well?
I, I can't necessarily answer that question. It's, it was unexpected. And, and so I have a return, I have a current return date for about six to eight weeks from now, but that, that could be extended. I just don't know.
Yeah. I was just making sure. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? I can say that I have worked with Kalen before, and actually, last week, a little bit. And she seems very capable. So I think this is a great idea for the interim. And I would entertain a motion.
Did you do a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget that part. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Kalen Stainbrook as the interim Parks and Rec Director, Director of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and until such time, the current Parks and Director returns from leave.
I will second that.
May we get a roll call?
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And thank you. And so now we come to prioritize ordinance development and long-range planning activities for Community Development Department. Staff report?
Good evening again. I'm Sheri Meads, your Community Development Director. And the reason this is before you tonight is back in August, I, staff brought to you a noise ordinance that ended up not being adopted. But there was a discussion about, you know, let's, let's continue to work on this and maybe create something that, that we would, that, you know, would be adoptable by the city council representing the community. So also, during the February third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, there was mention of a cannabis ordinance. And so I just felt that it would be prudent to basically put a list out there. There, as you noted, as I noted in the staff report, there are certain things that are requirements that staff works on. But things like ordinance development that aren't based on state requirements, the city council has discretion to provide direction. And I apologize, my throat is burning. So before you is a slide here. The, these are all highlighted in your staff report as well. And what staff is hoping for is for you to take a look at this list, prioritize one, up to as many as three, things that, when resources allow, would be prioritized for long-range planning activities. And I can leave this up, or I can just switch to this, which is basically saying what I just said, that staff is asking you to make a motion to prioritize one to three party long, priority, long-range planning activities. And then staff will schedule workshops to then solicit detailed feedback on whatever those are to make sure that whatever ordinance or activity or program is put forward is representative of what you guys desire. And that's really it. Kind of up to you now.
Well, reading your staff report, you talk in here about, where did it go? About having an individual workshops around March, around the March third council meeting time? Is that it?
March third is actually when we'll be back with the second reading of the ordinance we just introduced.
Right.
These would probably be more like April, May, and June.
Okay. But you want answer, you want a priority list by March third, is what I'm getting at.
I was hoping for a priority list tonight.
Okay.
I'm so demanding. And, and part of that is to, as you may know, we're, we're resource limited right now in community development. And so part of that would be looking at how we could accomplish these things.
Well, guys, gals, well, there will be.
I, I know my number one is the cannabis ordinance, as I believe that is where we are missing out on money. And as a city that is desperately looking for money, that would be my number one.
In the spirit of that, with the suggestions that you have here, I would think anything that we do for this fiscal year and going into the next fiscal year has to do with increasing revenue or decreasing cost. In, you know, unnecessary cost, possibly. So whether cannabis is something to introduce, or, you know, whether you're going to talk about the sidewalk vendor ordinance, filming activities, any, anything has to do with generating revenue. Hopefully, that is where we lead because the city needs that. I don't know if we necessarily need ordinances that embellish whether you have too much light, too much noise, too little, or too much trees, or things like that. Does that make sense to you? At least for now?
If I may.
Because you are limited in your resources?
If I may, through the-
Yes.
Okay. I, yes, heard loud and clear. I do want to point out that historic preservation and design guidelines for Main Street could potentially be something that I would factor into revenue generating. It's, studies have shown that people go places where there's acute downtown. And right now, there are no protections against any of the buildings there. Somebody could come buy them all, tear them down, and build apartments. So just something to consider.
Well, I, I am going to go with the cannabis ordinance. And second or third, I'm going to agree with Jerry on something, you know, I don't know which one would be the best as far as bringing revenue in, whether it's sidewalk or historic, making downtown look better, sidewalk vendors ordinance. But we really don't have any ordinance on vendors. I'm kind of thinking that one might be a little bit important, too. That would be my first and second, I think.
Well, I think, for me, the his downtown, Main Street area, protection for that, the sidewalk vendor ordinance, that's an opportunity as well as, because it, it has affected me for the last couple of, three years, probably, the outdoor lighting ordinance. There's a time when cats walk through the area behind my house, and it's like a Clegg light shining on the bedroom window. So I would think other people probably have incidents like that, and it might be good. So I would think other people probably have incidents like that, and it might be good.
So do you have any idea? I think there's?
It looks like the city manager's going to take over.
Well, so far, you've mentioned five ordinances, so you may want to go to public comment to help narrow down where you want to provide direction. But we're looking for one to three.
Yeah.
Priorities.
So we are open to public comment. If anyone has anything to bring up?
Hi, Sue Long. So your municipal code update is huge, and it really needs to be updated. That's your guideline for the city. That's the direction for anybody coming in that wants to do anything within the city. It's even, if you're looking to see what you can do on your own property, you go to the municipal code. So that's, to me, that's super important because that's your city guideline. And the design review guidelines, same thing. If you want development in the city, if you want people to come in to build new buildings so that you're getting attack space and you're getting possibly new businesses and all the things, those two things are super important because that tells any developer or anyone in town what they need to know before they come here. And if you don't have those updated, it's really hard to get in front of a planning commission, and things are a little gray or a little sketchy, and then every planning commissioner has an idea of what you should do with your money and your building, and then it just goes from there, and it can get really clunky and really crazy.
Any other comments from the public?
I'll just echo what Sue Long commented on. The municipal code definitely is a beneficial tool for the police department to make sure that that is up to date and current for us to be able to address things as they occur within the city. Also, agree with what she said regarding design review and what all of you council have said regarding looking for anything that increases our income.
Like they say, making the downtown area or any area attractive to open a business in is going to go far. So any other public comment? No? Seeing none, we need to take five down to three. And I like the idea of having clear, concise, having sat through some of the planning meetings, pre-construction meetings, bring an idea to the table and meet. So if we had clear, adopted design review guidelines with the historic preservation ordinance, that could go far. I don't know what the rest of you think.
Unless in the public comment, I would go cannabis, and then go into the design review, and then the municipal code.
I'd agree with that one. One, two, and three.
I do as well.
Okay. I think we got our priorities.
If you could put that in a motion, that would be wonderful.
Sure, I make a motion that the top three priorities for the development department is cannabis, design review guidelines, and municipal code updates.
I'll second.
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will move on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. So the upcoming council meetings are on March 3 and Monday, March 10. That's a special meeting where we will be, hopefully, where your council will be hopefully selecting a fifth council member. We have planning commission meetings at 6:00 PM on February 25 and March 11. We have Measure E meetings on March 18 and April 1 at 5:30. We have RONER Community Recreation and Park District meetings on Wednesday, March 5, and Wednesday, April 2 at 2:30 PM. And then we also, we had an FBID this morning, we had an FBID meeting this morning at 9:00 AM, and I'll talk a little bit about that as I continue on with my city manager report, and then we will, FBID will also be meeting on April 22. Just a few things to highlight for your city council. I met with the State Coastal Conservancy to review the grant requirements for the Riverwalk Park acquisition. This is where we'll acquire 237 acres. We'll keep, is it six or seven now? I can't remember, but we'll keep, let's say, seven acres, and we tribe will keep the other 229. And then there are several items to complete. There's a yellow book appraisal to complete, and then an additional grant application. I hope to have this wrapped up by the end of the calendar year. Myself and the finance director met with HDL to discuss the third quarter sales tax results. We also met with PARZ to discuss the investment strategy for PARZ that your council approved. I also met with COSMA as well, with the finance director. We've been hanging out a lot lately. And we talked about the enhanced infrastructure finance district. A staff report will be coming to your city council, hopefully by the end of March, to talk about the EFID. Also, met with McLean Foundation and Plan West to discuss the Wellness Center. McLean did allocate $1 million to the Wellness Center, and the RCRPD is involved in that, also known as the pool, so we'll continue to work on that. I've also met with some consultants to discuss proposals for grant writing for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and we're potentially looking for up to three grants for Riverwalk, Newburgh, and Vansel to do park development. And then I've continued to meet with local cities to talk about franchise negotiations with Recology, and we've finally scheduled an in-person meeting with Recology for March 6, so I will keep you updated on that. And then there was State of the City on February 12. So we continue to talk about that. And then I, also, we, I met with FBID, and we did talk a lot, we talked about bylaw changes, and also levying a $25 flat assessment, and so that will also come before your board with the FBID annual report in the near future, also in March. That concludes my report.
Okay, that's a lot of stuff happening in there. Okay, we come to council reports, and then start with Councilmember Conley.
Thank you. We had our first Parks and Rec meeting that I was involved with. Lots of discussion at this meeting, as it's the first one that took place after the fee adjustment schedule. So there is a lot of hubbub and comment around that, but there also has been more than a few people reach out to me and like the explanation and see where the city's going and understand where the money has to come from. So it's not as negative as it kind of once seemed. I think that it's actually taken a positive role and moving that forward. So I know there'll still be lots of questions, and then still some things to kind of iron out on that, but it looks like we are moving in a good direction for the Parks Department there, so.
And thank you for that. Councilmember King?
I have nothing tonight. There will be a Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting on the 27th that I'll attend.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Can I kind of follow up on your park thing? I had a really good meeting with, I think it's Jenny Canterbury. I can't remember her first name. I didn't, I had it written down. Mrs. Canterbury from the Canterbury Foundation, and she wrote a check for $30,000 for, to help cover the fees, the $20 per student fee for this next year. So those fees, for the recreation, kids recreation, will be mostly covered for this next year. So that was really nice. We had a great meeting, talked about a lot of, a lot of different opportunities for Fortuna, and we want to make it regularly. And I left the rest of my list at home, but I think that was the most important. I just really want to thank them for stepping up and doing that for the kids.
Yes, definitely.
And that's all I have to report.
Well, I would second the thank you for the Canterbury Foundation. And for my report, I also attended the State of the City, and it was informative. It had, kind of had a theme running through it with revenues and financial elements. And we're looking forward to seeing what's going to happen. And also, I have an HCOG meeting this coming Thursday. Part of that will be discussing the incoming or choice of the new executive director. It's a big position to fill, and we'd like to get that done, and look forward to see what's going to happen with that. And with that, that's all I have to report. Is there any other thing?
Make a motion, ma'am.
And I second that.